All the meeting order, could you please rise for the pleasure of the week?
My question to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unafraid, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, Sam. Gender adjustments, there'll be none tonight, and this meeting is being audiotaped. Number three, approve the minutes. I'm asking for a motion to approve the set of minutes. Substituent?
Second.
Second by Rockland. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Mr. Aubrey, would you like to introduce the student?
I'd be honored to. Rejoined tonight by Faith Ryan. She is a senior in our Horticulture Program Substituent. She is a very formidable young person. I think you're going to hear a different kind of report tonight from her. I think she's going to speak honestly to you folks about what she's exploring and what the kids are feeling with the hybrid model. Faith, as the fact when she was a sophomore, she is the first student in this building to win an FFA award, the Future Columbus of America, when she was a little sophomore. So now she's a big senior, and she's ready to represent the school and let you guys know what the kids are feeling and what's going on.
Excellent.
Ms. Ryan?
So first things first, our Student Council is doing the Pumpkin Carving Contest, which is completely virtual. So obviously you have to buy your own pumpkin, and it's not at the school. You have to do it at your house. And then what we're doing is we're taking pictures of the pumpkins and having them all sent to Mr. Colano, and we built a whole website to it. And he uploads them all, and then by the due date, which is the 23rd, which is this Friday, voting's going to be open, and the winner gets apparel and merch for the school. And as for the learning aspect of this, I feel like a lot of kids are struggling because it's hard to learn online for a lot of kids here, because as you know, this is a vocational school. Most of us are hands-on learners. That's why we came to this school in the first place. And it's hard to learn online when we can't be in school with the kids and learning with the teachers with our hands, which is how most of us learn the best. So a lot of kids are struggling with that. And I've talked to a lot of kids in my own grade, and I've seen a lot of kids struggling with their grades because of this, because they don't get the help that they usually get in the building every day during the school hours. So there are a lot of kids struggling with their grades, and that's preventing a lot of kids in my own shop from going out on co-op, because they don't have the proper grades they need, because they're not getting the help they need, which I think is a big problem, and there needs to be something to fix that. That's pretty much all I have to say on that.
Thank you, Faith. Thank you, Faith. Are you on co-op? No?
No.
No?
Okay.
Question, Faith?
Yes.
Shops, you do come to school?
Yes. It depends on what shop you're in. Most of the hands-on shops like HVAC, Carpentry, Horticulture, we're all in all five days. But shops like Graphic and Health, they're only in two days because they can do most of it online. It's mostly book work for that.
Thank you.
Yes.
How do you like the Horticulture Program?
I honestly love it. It was my first choice as a freshman, because I've always been interested in the outdoors and maintaining it. And it's just a really fun experience to have, and it's good life lessons you learn. I like it a lot.
Good. Very good. Thank you, Faith.
I see that. Report. Jim, Director?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The treasuries report this evening, on the cover that was sent out to everybody, we have just a listing of COVID-related expenses. Through the first of October, we spent about $268,000 on COVID-related expenses. And what happens with those is through the Plymouth County CARES Act funding, we go and we allocate based upon the number of students, and then we will build all the towns, our in-district towns, in our out-of-district towns. Now, the Plymouth County towns are all covered by the Plymouth County CARES Act, whereas the towns that we serve that are outside of Plymouth County, they're dealt with a little bit differently because they're more direct for those towns. We've also, as far as the COVID-related expenses, we've also signed up with FEMA. Again, a lot of emails saying that we should go to FEMA as well or first. And FEMA is a little bit more strict than what is allowable as a COVID-related expense. In the first deadline passed last Thursday, we submitted about $74,000 with a reimbursement request to FEMA. So we'll see whether, again, it's almost like a line item veto type of thing, where they'll go through the lines, we talk what we need for the stuff for, and then they will come back and give us a reimbursement. They reimburse it 75%. So whatever we get from FEMA, we'll knock off this list, and we're not going to go ask both places, Plymouth County and FEMA. But again, we're giving FEMA a try to see how they do with the reimbursements as part of that, of the big picture. Our cash position as of September 30th, cash balances overall about $6.4 million between all of our operating and stabilization accounts. Again, down from the end of the year, but again, we spent a lot of money the first three months, and we've done one round of billing for our member towns. We don't bill the out-of-district tuition until November 1st, so that'll be going out shortly. Our old account account is $766,000, which is, it just keeps going up about $1,000 a month every month, so I think we're looking well there. Our revenue for the month of September, we've got all of our, we bill first of August, we get most of our revenue in August, and then in September, we have a couple of towns that send their checks. We don't expect our money from our towns, you know, within a week or two. So things come in. So we received a little over a million dollars for our first assessment billing in September. We've been paid by seven out of our eight towns. Normal's the one town that hasn't paid us yet, but Trish reached out to them last week about just sending another copy of the invoice. I mean, no, with the way the town halls work with COVID, everything's expected to be delayed a little bit, so there's no issues there. We are still getting our regular Chapter 70 money, the $370,000 per month, which is pretty much, there has been no pickup in any of the budget processes with the state. So we're still getting our scheduled payment from the state on our Chapter 70. Overall, about a million four receipts so far during the month of September. Page three has all of our expenditures through the course of the month. Again, about $891,000 of expenditures, expenses for the month. Nothing glaring, nothing out of line. You know, there's always a rush to get the teachers, a lot of the supplies that they need, a lot of one-time payments there. We do have some unemployment. We have 15,000 of unemployment responsibilities. Again, there are some people out there who want unemployment. We've challenged one or two of them, people that they left the school, then they collected, they filed for unemployment because their second job laid them off. But, you know, we should be responsible for some of this. We're processing one or two of those, I guess. Overall, things are pretty strong, pretty normal for the month of September. And that's it for the treasuries.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the treasuries report.
I'll second.
Anderson. Anderson and Woodman, second by Woodman. Any discussion?
I have a question, Jim?
Yes.
If I may. Looking at the COVID-19 expenses, is that what you expect for the full year or that's up till now?
That's what we've been converting and spent up through the first of October, so.
Right. Do you expect that to increase even more?
Yes.
All right. The reason I'm saying that is because like Woodman's portion of this first thing is almost $55,000.
Right.
Right? Friday, we'll be receiving a check from Plymouth County for a little over $32,000, right, to pay for some of this, so.
Well, we haven't billed Woodman yet, so we're waiting for the, we're going through the process. I think the billing required, we had to do projections for various towns. We said, we did projections based upon, we really reached out to Tom and asked for projections regarding, you know, through the end of December. Again, the CARES Act funding only goes through December. So, and again, there's rules, especially with FEMA, you can't have a supply more than, you can't forward stuff. You can only, they'll only pay for like a 60-day supply. So we can't go out and buy 17,000 masks and expect them to pay for everything. So there's rules with everything. I think the next round of billing that we're going to do with the towns is do by the end of October, and that'll be through the end of September, because I know that Plymouth County is getting their money from the government in various stages as well.
What I want to do is, what I want to do is tomorrow, I will be talking to our interim town administrator and letting her know that what we can be expecting, we're getting like a bill from you?
Yes.
And that monies that we get from Plymouth County should go into some type of an account so that as different, as we, expenses come in both to towns and from the schools, regional schools, that's where we'll draw it from.
Right. Yeah. And pretty much if we, the local towns are just a conduit where we'll submit a bid to a town, and the town will forward that over to Plymouth County, and then the money will go to the town, and then they'll come to us. We received a few checks already. We did a first round of billing of like $8,000 back in the.
Right. And this is a significant amount of money, the $268. Where are we drawing that from?
Well, right now, it's in, the budget transfer, we'll handle about $30,000 of that. But there's medical supplies, there's repairs remaining. Like, it's fresh in my mind because we submitted it on last Thursday. We're doing a lot of equality, repairs and upgrades to our system.
Right.
We're buying, we're upgrading our remote services. We're buying, I think, 80 Chromebooks just arrived in the building last week. So again, there's a lot of those types of things that are coming through. So a lot of them are in supplies. We've earmarked this, so we've tagged all those receipts. So Janine can run a report of all our COVID-19 expenditures and so forth. And we've ordered a bunch of stuff. We've ordered a ton of Chromebooks. We haven't received them all yet, so. But as we receive things and we pay the bills, everything's all accounted for and so forth. So, but all the COVID expenses are spread out throughout the budget, but we know exactly where they are based upon Janine. So, and one of the, and again, I want to praise Janine. She's been with us for a few months. She can hold facility. She's doing a great job, because once we do all the billing for the towns, and again, as a reminder to our school committee members, we have to send copies of the signed warrants that we, for the fact that the expenditure was voted on by the school committee. We have to send copies of all the invoices, and there's a lot of manual putting together a package of stuff that we're going to have to now send out to a bunch of different towns. So there's a lot of work involved, and we're prepping and accumulating all that data right now to get it through the next round.
The town needs to show exactly where that, those COVID fundings are going to.
Yes, yes. So it's been, and again, for Rockland, Elizabeth Zelinski has been one of the contacts or helping with the towns, and she's been very involved. And she's been very helpful with Janine, you know, double checking as far as what the expenses, what the towns need to send from the county. We want to make sure we don't have to do it twice. We said, so Elizabeth's been very helpful with that process as well, so.
Funny, I really enjoyed today, Tom.
Yes.
Town administrator just said he thought it was paid, but he got checked with the accountant in the morning to find out why we haven't got it.
Okay.
He just didn't get that.
Jim, how many more Chromebooks? Sorry, do we have to have a round back order?
I think Tom was in the middle of the morning. We had an order for 80 and an order for 30.
So just 30 more?
I think it's, I think it's, we are not short for the students. All the students have what they need. We're swapping out some laptops. I don't know the exact number, but we did get a good chunk of them in just recently.
So just like maybe 30, 35?
We received 60, Mr. Mahoney. We're still waiting on 50.
Okay.
Now, as far as one of the expenses relating to, the example of the Chromebooks come in, once the Chromebooks come in, they have to be set up. And so we hired a part-time person in the IT department to help facilitate and get, he's working on getting these Chromebooks up and ready and to be used by the students and the faculty and so forth. So we've had some expenses. We've got COVID-related expenses for payroll regarding the COVID room LBN. We have additional expenses. We have addition, again, because we're doing two bus runs now in the morning as opposed to long, we've got added costs for bus drivers and custodial help and other stuff. So again, that stuff all relates as far as, it's not just Chromebooks and air handling systems and remote services and so forth. There are other payroll-related expenses as well across the board. So that's pretty much the status. The next piece is just the budget transfer for medical supplies, the $30,000, because again, a lot of the PPP expenses related to purchases are going into the medical supplies account that's managed by the nursing program, so by my nurse, Valance.
All right. Now, we have a motion for the treasuries report. Any discussion on the treasuries report? Seeing none. All those in favor or something?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Yeah, the budget transfers. Substituent?
Second.
Second by, was that Rockland? Okay. Any discussion on the budget transfers? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries. Chairman, I have nothing tonight. We're all set there. Subcommittee, those subcommittee reports tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I could comment on Capital Projects.
Yeah, yeah, if you could, just on the Capitol.
I want to say thank you to the members of our Capital Projects Subcommittee, Bob Mahoney, Bob Mola, Bob Hayward, and Jack Manning. They're serving in an important capacity. I'd just like to bring the full committee up to speed and also give you a heads up that we'll probably be talking about this at a future meeting in November and leading into the budget cycle. You may remember that as part of our fiscal '21 budget, we set aside some design fees to begin the process of putting together plans for some projects that we know have been a priority of ours and are part of our master facilities plan. So over the next month, the Capital Projects Subcommittee will be tasked with interviewing owner's project manager candidates. By law, if we have any work that exceeds $1.5 million, you need to have an owner's project manager. And the task for the OPM will be to assist us as we begin the process of working on design work for the roof on our 1992 edition, window and panel replacement. That work is, like I said, within the next few weeks into November so that we can begin that process. The larger, the larger task for the Subcommittee to bring recommendations back over the next month or two is going to involve us taking that next step into our master facilities plan, where it would lead to us seeking the committee's support to authorize the borrowing of money. We've done great work, and you've been very supportive of a lot of enhancements to the building. As I told the Capital Projects Subcommittee, we have now reached the point where absent MSBA, as each year goes by, there are projects that are a little bit too big for us to justify fitting into a single fiscal year, and therefore, we would have to entertain the idea of borrowing money. Now, there is no immediate plan to begin massive construction in fiscal '22. That would be getting ahead of ourselves. But what I would be asking the Subcommittee to help me with and then bring to this full committee as a form of a recommendation would be to look at the capital projects matrix with me and to prioritize where the expenses are most, where should we be putting our resources. And for those of you who were on the committee in 2010, you might recall that the last time we borrowed money was when we put a new roof on the 1962 original building. We did that in the summer of 2011. But in order to have a project start in the summer of 2011, we actually went to our towns in the spring of 2010. And preceding that, this committee voted in March of 2010 to authorize debt. Under the law, regional school committees have the ability to vote to authorize. Doesn't mean that that is a power of a purse. The power belongs to the towns. But the way the law works is that when a committee authorizes debt, there's a 60-day window for communities in the form of a town meeting to either take action, and if they take action, then they would have to vote to support it with a majority vote at a town meeting, or a town may choose to take no action, and that would be considered in the affirmative. So what I'm going to be asking the Subcommittee to consider and then bring back to everybody for further discussion is the idea that if we wanted to put ourselves in a position to begin to take on work like a roof project, window project, overhaul ventilation, in addition to the building, modest addition to the building, we actually have to have those conversations now. And I explained to the Subcommittee that it is my intention to start very informally, but early, by reaching out to your respective town administrators to just give them a heads up. Because as you know, for this regional school district to get a debt authorization, it requires all of our towns to agree, either in the form of an affirmative town meeting vote or taking no action. And so my hope is to explain that and give town administrators a heads up, and then let the process run its course, where we can talk as a full committee about these priorities and charter course for the next few years. A debt authorization does not mean that the district immediately borrows the sum of money in its entirety and does everything immediately. What it can mean is, depending on how the warrant article is written, you can seek a debt authorization to include funding for a series of projects, and then as we move forward with our master facilities plan to try to complete the recommendations, we can map that out as years go forward. The timing is good for many reasons. Not the least of which is that we all know we need to do these projects, but also that we have no debt other than, I think, a $4,500 interest payment to kind of mop up this year. So it's very, so we would be going into fiscal '22 with no other debt on the books. So more to be said on that, Mr. Chairman, but I do appreciate there's a, there are several homework assignments that the Subcommittee is willing to roll up their sleeves and get into. But I would expect that we could bring something to the full committee for discussion at our November meeting, so that you, and I will send you some more detailed information once the Subcommittee does a little more work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New superintendent director, Tom, if you could continue with your report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Me again. I want to say thank you as when we last met, we were only a couple of days into the school year, and now we're a month in the rearview mirror. Thanking our business office, as Jim has noted, they are the tip of the spear when it comes to making sure that we're going to get all reimbursable dollars that we're eligible to get. And that takes the cooperation of our department heads and administrators to make sure that everything is properly documented. And I'm very pleased with how that's moving along. I cannot say enough about our staff and how they have rolled out and have become so flexible with the model that we have in place. Teachers moving, the kids staying where they are, the safety measures. Students are grateful to be in school. Masks, social distancing, follow the arrows in the hallway, and all of the other nuisances that we've come to understand. Them, having them in a community really, really matters. Beyond, beyond the positive start to this school year, I want to make one other brief COVID mention, and that has to do with the, what I'm expecting is some upcoming guidance to come from the Department of Education. We all know about the COVID map that gets published. Usually it's actually published Wednesday nights or maybe overnight into Thursday. And we know about the red, yellow, and green coating of towns. And last Wednesday, a lot of towns in the Route 3 corridor moved into red. And we all consume media, and we know that red equals bad, and what does that mean? So I wanted to give you just a brief overview as how I'm seeing it and what I'm hearing. The first factor is when you have a, when you have a community, and we have eight, of course, and if you want to, by extension, even towns beyond our district, one of the factors the state wants us to consider is that we look at these maps for at least three weeks, and that we don't draw any, there is no immediate trigger that if, if red, then something like close or go all remote. So we need to look at the data for at least two more Wednesdays and see what those numbers look like. Then where the state is going to go is they're going to provide some additional guidance about looking at what might have triggered a red designation within a particular community. Depending on the size of our community, there could be a very small cluster or a single incident that could have moved the community into the red. You could have two communities in the red. One where there was, there was an event, it led to, it led to a controlled number of folks getting tested positive, and that could have raised it into the red category. Whereas others, there might have been no discernible event. So the state is going to be asking us to look at that as a factor, and then also look at the, look at us on the local level as well. So in any event, I'll be looking to see what the data looks like this upcoming, you know, this evening or into tomorrow, and then next week as well, and consider all those other factors. But that's something that's getting, getting a little bit of traction right now in the press, and I would expect that there'll be some more guidance on that coming out, coming out very soon. Mr. Chairman, I'll just continue with recruitment and program advisory. As we move into the school year, despite all that we're dealing with, there are certain things that we do at certain times of the year. And this is recruitment season, although it's going to look a lot different. We are, we are planning to have two virtual open houses, if you will, and they will run on, a little bit later than usual, but they will run on Saturday, November 14th, and on Tuesday, December 1st. The Saturday open house will be in the morning. If I want to participate in this open house, I can register, and then I can get sent a link, and I will be able to be introduced to all of the teachers and all of the programs in a structured schedule, plus a seminar on academics and student life. We'll run that on a Saturday, and we'll also run that during the week on December 1st. We are still going to try to run tours in the building, but I'm calling them museum tours because, don't touch, no one's here, be quiet, but it will probably be a very scaled back model, but we can do that. I would envision one family, I would envision them telling us in advance which handful of shops do they want to see. I would envision us doing this after hours. But we're not going to talk about the individual family touring and the small group touring. I've got to tell you, we don't talk about this enough, but despite having wildly successful in-person open houses in October, our ninth grade admissions counselor, Amy Dow, actually tours about 200 additional families after open house through the end of the calendar year and into the winter. And she does a great job with it. And the folks that are setting aside the time to come as a family and tour the school on a set schedule have a pretty high rate of application. So we know we're not going to be able to service that volume, either because the interest of the community might be a little bit lower. So that was one of the rationales to having a couple of these open house sessions. So we'll see what, we'll see how November 14th goes, but we intend to operate something similar on December 1st. And we'll continue to provide outreach and support. We're building a lot more digital content on our website. We want there to be on-demand recruitment materials. We all look up information on our own schedule, 3:00 in the morning, whatever, Sunday, whatever. And we want to make sure that when folks are interested in learning more about us, that they have the ability to do so on our website. So we're having, we're having administrators and counselors work on digital content to add to what's already there, in the hopes it can help paint a complete picture of what we do. And I'll just quickly mention program advisory. We are also doing similar models. We're running our fall program advisory. We won't be serving virtual chicken dinner. People have to put that in front of the camera at home, but we'll be running that off, we'll be splitting it on two separate evenings based on the shop program, and that will, and that will allow our administrators to also be able to be in attendance at those meetings. So we're still moving ahead with program advisory and recruitment in the fall as normal. Can I answer any questions on recruitment or program advisory? Thank you.
Tom, just wanted, I just wanted to make a comment. Amy does a fantastic job with what she does, and it doesn't go unnoticed by some of the members here. I would assume all the members, but she's already started interviewing.
Yes, even prior to any recruitment out of the gate, we have at least 60 applications. Yes, even prior to any recruitment out of the gate, we have at least 60 applications already.
Yeah.
And, and the interview process, which is, it's a common refrain, our interviews will be done online as well. So, yes, we are, we're actually, we're starting that earlier than usual.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just go out of order and make a note that we do have a plumbing textbook that I'll be putting in for purchase to be used by our HVAC program. And then I will, I think I covered everything, and I will turn it over to Mr. Aubrey for an administrator update.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Mr. Hickey is correct. We've been in school five weeks as of today, and I will say Faith Ryan is correct as well. We're all kind of adjusting to, I hate the term, the new normal. I don't like that term, but it is what it is. So, we are educating the students on how they get their extra help. The teachers are here before and after school. If the students want to come in before school, they can, we can get the bus transportation. If they want to stay after school, their parents can bring them back and forth. It's, it's an educational process. It's just not the norm of what they do. I need help, I'll stay after school. That can't really happen. There has to be a little bit of planning involved, and so we're working with the students on doing that. We have our, besides advisory and admissions and things, we are doing parent teacher conferences in about two weeks. Those are all virtual as well. So, there'll be a five-minute window where each parent can sign up with a teacher and have five minutes to talk about their students, and then go on to the next class. So, that is happening on the 29th. We'll have afternoon sessions, so the vocational people can talk to some stu, talk to some parents, and then at night it'll just be the administrators, because the vocational staff will be in advisory meetings. We're, we're trying to move toward a normal school year, so there are things like Tom says that need to happen at certain times. So, we've started those things. You all received your yearbook today from last year. We have already started putting together next year's yearbook. Student council, as Faith mentioned, is doing their pumpkin contest, which some teachers have entered, so I'll maybe be able to tell you how we did in the contest. We're going in, no names, but we'll see how we do. We've started having clubs and activities also going virtual. Our drama club started last Tuesday night with over 50 students logged into their virtual meeting. They're going to do a series of a little different things, because right now they're not planning on doing their usual dinner theater. They're going to do some voiceover work, and something we're really excited about. We're going to work with one of the sending elementary schools, and they're going to pick a book, and the kids are going to draw the pages of the book, and then our students are going to be the voices in the voiceover stuff. So, we're going to just kind of tweak a little thing, you know, the 2020 version, and we're going to make that happen. So, our clubs and activities are starting to grind up, and everything is virtual. We're, we're trying to get those things out. FFA, which Faith is a big member in, and Skills USA are also running as well. We're studying those programs. They're going to come. They're going to look a little different. We won't be going to regionals at any event for this year. Regionals will be done virtually in the schools where they are. So, the students will take the in-school test, they'll take the regional test, and then we'll figure out what happens with states. That might be a hybrid model. The usual stuff that we do is happening, and it feels good in the building to get back to traditional learning and traditional activities that we do. I do need to, one final thing. I need to commend Mr. Boyle, Mr. Mello, Mr. Bello, and the entire co-op team. As of tonight, we have 47 seniors on co-op already, and we should have another five by the time the seniors are back on November 2nd. So, that is more than one-third of the class already out on co-op, so I need to commend them. And I need to commend the students who are doing what they need to do to make sure that they can get out and learn the trade skills they need. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Aubrey, on the seniors going out and eligibility for co-op with the, going on what Ryan said tonight, is the, the standards being still the same standards as in the past, or are we kind of stepping down a little bit to allow, to allow more students out on co-op?
We have, we have co-op standards, and for seniors, it's a 75 in academics, and it's a 85 in their shop program. But I will say, tell you that we do look at each student, and we look at them separately and decide what's in the best interest of that student.
Okay, because like, like she said, if they're struggling with grades and academics and the way the virtual touring is and how it's working out, and it's not just that shop. I'm sure it's just a few of them going on there, and that's a great number compared to our past.
We're, we're ahead, we're ahead the last two years. In 2020, it's amazing. We, I could finish up by saying allied health program. We have worked, we now have okay to send them out on co-op jobs as long as they do not need their CNA license. The state has not been able to schedule our students. They're ready for it, but the state hasn't been able to schedule the test for us. So, we can put students out in co-op jobs as long as they don't need that license. That just came down last week. So, we'll be able to, there's another shop that we haven't been able to do anything with. Where we would open that, cosmetology is another shop that we do not have any Cosmo students on co-op, because they haven't been able to take the test. So, when you really look at this number of, say, 52, 53 on a second, that includes two shops whose students cannot go out right now. So, it's really, it's a great work for the entire school, including the students.
Thank you.
You have something?
Yeah, kind of going back to what Tom, just about Tom and Hart, how are we doing with COVID in terms of students, staff, whatever? Have we had cases? Have we had people that had to stay home? Has that happened at all there?
Yes. And I will say, not naming names, Collette Worrell, our nurse, is in contact with families on a daily basis if they, if they have a sore throat or whatever it may be. She's the one who's really helping them. And as we've mentioned at the last meeting, we do have an understanding with Hanover Fire Department and testing for our staff and students who live in Hanover, and we have made use of that on occasion as well.
Have we had any positive tests? That's another, have we had cases?
Yes, yes, we have. So, we've had, I've, I've sent out two notices since the start of the year. What I'm, what I'm pleased about is that we're seeing great cooperation from parents. So, if a parent knows that their child is symptomatic and it's on their watch, they're still letting us know. So, the parents have gotten the message that they're not, they're not fooling around with us, and, you know, Mrs. Worrell is not either. So, if someone, if someone is presenting with symptoms, we have an entire protocol that we're following as well. And again, we know, we know it can get a little complicated when it comes to calculating quarantine days and things like that. But I'm very pleased with how that's being tracked.
So, just another comment would be, is that there's free testing over at Nassau Sawyer. I think it's Monday to Friday, and I'm sure it is on weekends, but it's 2:00 to 7:00 for free testing. It's drive-up.
I know my hammer will fire, personal experience. They came to my house at 2:00 in the afternoon, did a little nose swab, my wife and I. Shipped it off by 5:00 in the morning. We had the email that we were negative. It's that quick, so, don't hesitate to use them.
Yeah, they've been a very good resource and continue to be a good partner for us.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is that it?
That's all.
Okay. All right. Dan, you ready?
Are we, have we taken the textbook? Have we?
No.
We're on.
Delegate to the Mass Association School Committee General Assembly.
I'll make the motion. We just nominated Dan.
Second. That's why I asked if you were ready.
It's already written in the minutes.
Yeah, we already got it. All right, any discussion on that? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Yes.
Yeah, it's unanimous. Really good.
Even Dan, you agreed.
Even you agreed. Okay, next item is a temporary policy change, admission policy. First, I'd ask for a motion to suspend the two-month policy approval process.
I'll make the motion.
No, I'll, second by Rockland. Any discussion on that? Seeing none? All those in favor? I'm pending. It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, they asked for a motion to approve the policy changes that we received. Any, any discussion on that? Or Hanson has made a motion to accept them. Second by Abby Tabington. Any discussion on those policy changes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Donation. We received a donation for, where'd it go? Where'd it go? Who else?
2007 Nissan Versa.
Two thousand seven Nissan Versa. Woman alumnus.
Do I have a motion to, please make your doubt. Some old church here.
Thank you, women. Second, situant. Any discussion? No. Seeing none? All those in favor?
I have one comment.
Go ahead, sir.
I wonder if that good woman that walks between the truck and the car steals the French flies out of the Nissan Versa, and it follows its track, if that's the survivor of the cow?
I don't know. It could be. Warrants.
Are we going to do the textbook? Did we already do?
We already did the textbook.
It's just an informational item. Yeah, thank you.
That's right.
Warrants, sir.
Warrants, we have two tonight. Warrants, one, 1A, two, 2101, 27A, 2X and 3X. Total sum for those total warrants is $1,688,188.30.
Some moves. Yeah, Whitman. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second warrant for this evening is, warrants 4B, 5, 5A, 6, 7 and 7M, for a total of $1,339,080.63.
Second. Second by Situant. Any discussion on that one? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. Motion carries on both. Any requests for action? Seeing none. Whitman, do you have a?
Motion to adjourn, I'll do respect.
Thank you. Second by Tabington. All in favor?
Aye.
It's a wrap.